I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. To start us off, let's take a moment for silent prayer. Please join me and stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see a large number of people here tonight. I wanted to start us off tonight and just talk a little bit. I know that probably several of you are here about the reassessments that you received, and I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. I know a lot of people have received those and have questioned and really thought they have been much higher than they expected. And I just wanted to first kind of explain the process. We are required every four years, the Commonwealth of Virginia requires the Commissioner of Revenue to reassess the real property values of each locality. The last reassessment the city went into effect was January 1st, 2021. The newest reassessment values will go into effect on January 1st, 2025. So we went through this process through the Mount Rogers Regional Planning, the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, where they did the RFP process with the Commissioner of Revenue's from several localities and within that Mount Rogers footprint. So the counties of Bland, Carroll, Grayson, Smith, Washington, With, cities of Bristol and Galax are all going through this same process. I know I have heard from several that you do not agree with what the reassessment is that you received, and I've got mine right here, and I'm with you on that. I will tell you, if you want to appeal, there is a process, and it must be done by December 23rd, 2024. So on your reassessment, there is at the bottom of that, there will be a form that you can fill out that where you can put the reason for your appeal, what you would like to, the reason you want to appeal it, and then any remarks you want to put on there. So I encourage you, if you want to appeal this, make sure you get it in by that date. You can mail it in, you can email it in, you can even come down to our Commissioner of Revenue's office and talk to them, and they will submit it for you. But I will tell you, as far as the city council, it's not something we just decided to do here at Christmas time and send you all those. And some of the calls I've got has been pretty interesting because I'm like, well, it's the law of Virginia that we do this, and it's done through our Commissioner of Revenue's office. And the timing just happens to be here at the end of the year because it does go into effect in January. So again, please make sure, and I will tell you, I've heard some success stories when people have appealed them in the past. They didn't feel like it was a fair assessment, and they have appealed and have been successful. It might not have come back at the number they thought it should, but it did change it. So again, I encourage you to do that. We are all in the same boat you are. We have all received ours, and ours are high, too. And I know it's been four years, there's been a lot that's changed in those four years. But just know, I think I just want to make it clear that this is a process that we must go through. It's not just the city of Bristol, Virginia's council deciding to do this. This is a process that we are required to do through the Commonwealth of Virginia that requires our Commonwealth, our Commissioner of Revenue to do. So I hope that that helps if you have any questions as far as how to appeal. I hope this helps you understand that. Again, just make sure you get that appeal in by December 23rd, 2024, no later than 5:00 PM. And if it's received after that, they will not review it. I also wanted to point out that in our Commissioner of Revenue's office, and it's Chloe Barker who is here with us tonight in the back there, she has a book of all the values, the reassessment values, the current one. And so if you, there's been people that's wanting to take a look at this or interested in this. I will tell you, if you would like to take a look at this book, you can stop by the Commissioner of Revenue's office and look at values and compare and look at that if you would like to. So I will now open up the floor for any other council comments.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you said that well and explained that well. And just to piggyback off that regarding the taxes, we all did receive ours, and I also did an appeal today myself personally. And on the form that everyone got, there's some instructions there about whether you mail it in or email it in. I chose the email route, so don't know how that will go. But I did just want to point out, too, that I really think this is a two-step process. There's really the assessment, which is what your property is worth, whether it's $100,000 or $200,000. And then the second part of that is the tax rate, which is currently $1.17 per $100 of assessed value. So I think for a long time, the city has had a really high tax rate, and the tax rate is what we vote on and set. And I believe that'll probably be in March normally for 2025. I know the December 5th deadline just passed, and that was for taxes for the second half of 2024, the next time real estate taxes are due are June 5th for the first half of 2025. So we vote on that tax rate in March. Those bills go out maybe in April, and people pay those taxes by June 5th. So that's the tax rate that we'll be looking at. So I'm eager to say that we'll look at that and figure out how much that tax rate will go down to offset, on average, the increases. So preliminary, but we'll get into that during the budget season before those tax bills go out.
Yep.
And I would just like to add, too, a couple of people have mentioned the appeals process. Last year, or last cycle, I was not on council, did not realize I'd be up here at this point, this time. But my property value came in much higher than expected. I appealed it back then, four years ago in 2020. Did get it decreased, not everything I wanted, however. It did help tremendously. So the appeals process can work. Please do that if you feel like you need to, if you feel like that does not match where it should be. And then just to echo what Councilman Farnham said, the tax rate, we will look at that in the spring. It's my understanding we're required to equalize it. So we will have to lower it and then work from there if anything needs to change. So we will be addressing this.
Yep.
Go ahead.
There's also a second option. If you go to the assessment company and they, you don't agree with what they decide, maybe they say that your assessment's valid. You then have an option of appealing to the Board of Equalization, which isn't out of town. That board is made up of Bristol, Virginia residents, so you can appeal to them as well. And that gives you an extra option as well.
You know, I'll just say, it is, a lot of times when people say, oh, you know, you can appeal, they might not see it as worthwhile. It is absolutely worthwhile to appeal because, you know, things can be changed, you know, if they go back and look and they say, okay, we overshot it on your property, we can, you know, they can fix it. You know, I think that's important. I did not have to appeal in 2020 like the vice mayor did, but this year mine came in at 149% increase, so I do have to appeal. And I've not changed one doorknob on my house, so. But, you know, these things happen, and, you know, we'll go through the appeal process. And I hope that anyone who feels that their assessment came in higher than it should will go through the appeal process as well. And I will say that the Commissioner's office is very good to work with. You know, they're helpful, they'll help walk you through the process if you need it. And, you know, we'll get through this, and the spring, as has been noted, we will presumably will vote to lower the tax rate to kind of equalize things the way they should be.
And.
Go ahead.
My apologies. I had a couple other things not reappraisal related I wanted to bring up real quick. I want to thank Mrs. Toman at Virginia Primary School for putting on the Winter Wonderland last night. Started during COVID in 2020 when the kids couldn't do Christmas parties, couldn't do Christmas events, and they created almost like a mini Speedway and Lights around the school campus. She's kept it going for years now. They had, they gave out, I think, 1,000 pieces, slices of pizza, so however many kids that turned out to be, not everybody took some. I gave out so much hot chocolate, it was an amazing event. Great to see the community come together. I know the fire department was there, police department, sheriff's office, Isaiah 117 House, so many different groups in the community come together for that. And then also, speaking of the firefighters, I wanted to brag on a couple of them, Mason Kendrick and Jesse Stam, both are now licensed paramedics, they got that in the last week or so. Congratulations to those guys. We've got several high-quality folks at the fire department, they do a fantastic job for the city. I got to hang out with them a little bit a couple weeks ago, it was really, really cool to see their work firsthand. So if you see any of our first responders, please give them a big thank you. And then also, this coming Saturday, I wanted to put in a plug for Isaiah 117 House. They're doing a, it's called Holy Graffiti, they're building an Isaiah 117 House. It's in Washington County, but it serves the county and Bristol City. And they're encouraging folks to come while it's still, just the studs of the house, you can write scripture, write positive messages on the studs, so it's kind of going into the foundation of the house. It's really cool. And that's Saturday from 11:30 to 1:30. It's at Exit 7, right next to the Washington County Social Services Office, so I hope to be there, I hope you guys will show up, too.
We all got to talk about the tax rate, and I guess I do have a couple things I'll jump in with.
I know.
Also, this coming Saturday at 11 o'clock AM, there is unveiling for a monument, a plaque for Robert Clark in conjunction with the Bristol Community Remembrance Project. That will be, I believe, at the cemetery down the hill from the United Company on Glenway. And that's at 11 o'clock, and you can check online, and they will be offering shuttle services if you want to go to that from a different location, they'll give you a ride there. Should be a good event. And also, I want to thank everybody who came out on the 5th for the Christmas parade. It was incredibly cold, but we had a wonderful crowd, I'd guess a couple thousand people. And we gave out enough candy to all the kids that they are probably still on a sugar high at this point, so.
Yep.
Good for them. But thank you all for coming.
Thank you for mentioning that. It's been said that those who forget their history are destined to repeat it. That is a dark time in our history, but if we forget it, we could always potentially slip back into it. So we need to be reminded of the problems of our history, not just the good times. Another local good time, though, last Saturday, the Bristol Train Station had their Polar Express themed Christmas event, and that went well, went smoothly, and with some tweaks, we were able to serve more people this year than we have in the recent past. And I know a lot of people really enjoyed that opportunity.
All right, thank you. City managers' comments.
Yeah, just a couple of comments to follow up on the real estate tax assessments. I know several of you, council members and members of the audience, are concerned about the reassessment. But one thing that the law is clear on in Virginia is the reassessments have to be based on the fair market value of a home or other property. And the Supreme Court in Virginia has stated that the fair market value is defined as the price of a property will bring when offered for sale by one who desires but is not obliged to sell and is bought by one who is under noted necessity of having it. This definition is consistently applied in Virginia case law emphasizing that assessments should reflect the property's value in an open market transaction. Furthermore, the Virginia Supreme Court has upheld that assessments must be at fair market value, and any deviation from that standard could be challenged in court. I know several council members have suggested that they are going to appeal their assessments. I own several parcels of property here in Bristol, and my tax or my assessment doubled on those properties. However, I'm not going to appeal those simply because I know, like, properties have sold for what the new assessed value is. And the likelihood of that being lowered by the assessor is slim based on what the sales have been in that area. So just remember that it is a fair market value that has to be applied to the property. It's not what you necessarily think the property is worth, or what your neighbor thinks your property is worth, but it's the fair market value of what your home would sell for in the event you wanted to sell it to someone that didn't necessarily have to buy it and you didn't necessarily have to sell it. So, no other comments.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're moving into the adoption of agenda.
I move the adoption of the agenda as presented with one change. I would like to take item F, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items, and move that up behind D1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move, and a second, to move item F up to under item D1. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. Okay, first item on the agenda, presentation of the June 30th, 2024 audit report. We have a couple of people signed up for a public comment. First person on the list is Jeff Bryan. And I will state, when you come up to give your public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and then also you will get three lights. You will get a green light, and then a warning light that your time is almost up, and then a red light means that your time is over. So first person I would like to ask to come up is Jeff Bryan.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to comment about the reclassifying tax about parcel 308-2-1, the type of zoning that is being requested here. The legal description is sufficiently nebulous, and there are enough exceptions written into it, that it seems basically anything can be done with that parcel.
Can I stop you just for a second, Mr., let's see, Mr. Bryan? Are you talking about item actually number four?
That's what I had on my sheet, yes.
Okay, let's see, I apologize for that. Can I put you on hold just for a few minutes? I apologize if you will come back up.
Certainly. I wondered why I was being called so early.
I'm sorry. I saw D, and I skipped right over there. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we are looking for a staff report from Tamara.
Thank you, Mayor Knave and members of council. This item is the presentation of the June 30th, 2024 audit report. Mr. Corbin Stone, Certified Public Accountant for Robinson, Farmer, Cox and Associates, the auditors for the city of Bristol, is here to present the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. And Mr. Stone is the Managing Director of Robinson, Farmer, Cox, the Blacksburg office. Just want to thank you.
Mayor, council members, thanks for having me. You've got three handouts in front of you. One is just a one-page, some recommendations we had from the audit. I'm not going to go over those because they're pretty minor, just really some housekeeping items. The second thing is our audit presentation, and I'll kind of walk you through that and give you a little more information about the audit report. The third item is the audit report itself, and we're not going to go through that because it is 137 pages long. So we're going to go over the Cliff Notes, and then, of course, as you read the audit report later on, you can call me or email me with any questions. On page two of the handout, you'll see that the independent auditor's report is on pages nine through 12 of the large document. And I'm on page two of the smaller handout. And you did receive what we call an unqualified or unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which means we believe the financial statements are materially correct. The second opinion you have in the bound document is what we call our Government Auditing Standards Opinion. If you had any material noncompliance with laws, those would be reported there, or significant internal control deficiencies, we could report those there as well. We didn't have any issues, so you got a clean opinion there. And that's on pages 129 to 130 of the audit report itself, of the financial report. And then finally, we audit a few of your federal programs every year, kind of on a rotating basis. So you receive federal dollars, and then we'll select programs kind of at random, I say at random, it's a selection process we go through, not entirely at random. And we didn't find any problems with the programs we audited this year. So you received also an unqualified or unmodified opinion there. The next couple pages of the handout, that's our letter to those charged with governance. And what that is, it's a required letter we must give to you that if we run into any problems during the audit, they get disclosed here. We didn't. The audit went very well. Tamara and her staff did a wonderful job of getting information to us as requested. We didn't have to wait a long time for it. That's why I'm presenting pretty early in December. So the audit went very well. That letter does also speak to certain estimates of the financial statements. At the end of the day, some of the numbers in the financial statements are estimates. We don't know how much it's actually going to cost to close the landfill. That's an estimated liability that you're going to incur over the next several years. We don't know really what your pension liabilities are. That's an estimate, the present value of those future liabilities, but we don't know when someone retires, how long they're going to be in the VRS systems receiving benefits. So there are some estimates in the financial statements. They're well thought out, they're well reasoned, but we do want to disclose those to you in this letter. Other than that, you get the boilerplate letter, so nothing, nothing to report there. And we'll get into the numbers a little bit. If you flip to page, I believe it's going to be page seven of the handout, yeah. Nobody in the audience can read those numbers because they're too small, so I'll have to speak to a few of them. At the very top, you see this says equity analysis, and then we have some numbers up at the top, kind of in a gray bar. That's, those are your full accrual financial statements. And what that means when I say full accrual, that includes all the assets of the city, including this building. It also includes all the liabilities of the city, all the debt payable, all the bonds that you owe, your landfill liability. And so at the end of the day, right now, the city has a negative net position of $98 million, largely because of the landfill liability. Again, that's all assets of the city minus all liabilities of the city. Below that, you'll see the condensed balance sheet for governmental funds. Now, this is more or less a modified cash basis of accounting. So you're not going to, when we talk about fund balances, you're not including the value of this building, but you're also not including the liabilities for the landfill, for your bonds, those long-term liabilities. And you can see your fund balance actually grew from $43 million to $53 million, but again, you're kind of saving that up to meet some of those liabilities that are driving that net position number down. So you just have to keep that in mind. And that's what we want to see, we want to see that fund balance growing up because we know we have these long-term liabilities that are going to have to be extinguished in some cases in the fairly near future. Page seven, this is giving you the equity analysis for the transit fund. And it's so small relative to the general fund that I'll just say that it has positive net position of $692,000 at the end of the year, and has been on a slight incline, so it's been growing a little bit over the past few years. The next page, and I apologize that the folks can't see this, these numbers because they're too small. The next page, I'm just comparing the general fund balance, or really the income statement over the past five years from 2020 through 2024. And I highlighted some items in yellow off to the right because those annualized growth rates have been skewed a little bit because when your landfill closed, we moved operations for all solid waste collection disposal into the general fund. So you're going to see that charges for services have increased by 40% or 41%. That's because sanitation charges are now in the general fund, no longer in the solid waste fund. General government administration increased significantly, largely legal fees related to the landfill have driven that up. And of course, your public works expenses there, the third highlighted item that's yellow, has increased significantly. That's due to the landfill now being included in the general fund. Finally, total debt services. Finally, total debt services increased, again, that's all driven by the landfill now being included in the general fund. And then down at the bottom, we see ending fund balance of 53 million. Of course, that matches back to the first page, and ending cash balance unrestricted at 35 million, which grew slightly by about 4 million over the last fiscal year. The next page, I'm just looking at fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures, and your ending cash, as a percent of your, or ending cash balance as a percent of your operating expenditures. And in this case, we take the city's expenditures, the school board's expenditures, we remove the transfer between the two, to come up with what your net expenditures are, and ending fund balance was 42% of annual expenditures last year. Ending cash balance was about 29% of annual expenditures last year. And you see that's grown a little bit, but again, you're in the saving mode, kind of like me. I have a daughter that's starting college next year, so you're in the saving mode for those expenses that are going to hit you in the next couple of years. And the next couple pages, I'm really just graphing some of that information out, and I'll flip through that. On page 10, you do get a chance to see how the mix of revenues has changed from 2020 to 2024, and the same with expenditures. And I'm going to skip forward to page 13. And here, I'm just, really just scheduled out those long-term liabilities. You know, you're not going to sell this building to help close the landfill. It's just not going to happen. So those long-term liabilities are going to have to be funded with cash. Now, they are spread out over a longer period of time, but ultimately, you're not going to be selling assets to pay for these things. You're going to be generating revenues, whether it's tax revenue, or sales tax revenue, or meals tax, and that sort of thing. They're really going to be used to pay all these obligations. So at the end of the year, the general long-term obligations were $260 million. Again, that's increased significantly since '22, and that's because we've moved the solid waste fund into the governmental activities column in the financial statements. We flip to the next page, I've included the school board's long-term liabilities on there as well, primarily because everyone just needs to realize, in their case, that they have a VRS liability of about $16 million, and that's paid for through increased contributions every year. So it's going to take a while to kind of whittle away at that. And then finally, at the bottom in blue, you're going to see debt per capita, and we've split it out between interest-bearing debt loans, debt that you're paying back in a disstructured manner over several years, and then other debt per capita, and that includes landfill closure, compensated absences, your VRS liabilities, your pension liabilities, to come to a total debt per capita of about $18,000. And that compares to a state average from last year of about $7,800. So it's quite a bit higher than the state average for cities. And then the last few pages, might be a sleep aid, these are the new accounting standards that are coming out in the next couple of years, so I don't think there's anything there that's really going to impact the city significantly. It's not going to make you look any better financially or any worse financially. It's just really, most of these are clarifications on old standards, and for the most part, you are already reporting the numbers in the format, in the prescribed methodology within the standards. So I don't think there's going to be a big impact to the city. Like I said, the audit went very well. Fund balance is healthy, but we do have a lot of liabilities out in the future that you're going to be using that fund balance for. So, and I'll stop there and try to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Overall, I think this report reflects the great work that's coming from our financial team, with leadership of Ms. Bradlin, so thank you for that. I think you've truly cleaned up our books and really worked hard over the years to do that. And you're right, while the overall amount that we have on hand may look good, we've got to also look at all the debt that we have that's going to take that in, take that over. So I will, I think we will all spend some time looking into this and reviewing it, but I will open it up to any other council questions or comments.
Just a quick thank you again to you and your firm for their work. I know we do this annually at the end of the fiscal year, and some numbers we look at annually, and some monthly, and some weekly, and some daily here at the city. So where you all are involved with us once a year, you can kind of see the changes of the city's financial position over the years, and the changes, like bringing the solid waste fund into the general fund, as numbers certainly changed, and it looks a lot different than a few years ago. So thanks for sticking with us and working with us.
That's my pleasure.
I also would like to thank you for the work you've done. We appreciate your diligence on this, and thank you, Ms. Bradlin, for, I mean, very good, clean financial bill of health. Thank you for the work that you and your team do, day in, day out, to get this done. This is a one-time report, but it reflects a lot of work, so thank you for that. Definitely, as the mayor kind of alluded to, there are definitely some sobering numbers in here. We've got a lot of things to work through. There's been a lot of progress over the last several years, but there's a lot before us, so.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and for Robinson Farmer and Cox's work on this, and thank you to our finance department. I know these numbers are very large and very scary, but a lot of that, you know, we're headed in the right direction, but a lot of the big increases in these numbers that are, you know, sweat-inducing are because of the way that we have started reaccounting for the solid waste fund, which is now just part of our general fund. So, you know, we do have a long way to go, but I'm glad that we have a plan in place to be able to do this. And it requires, this is always a good reminder every year, that to be able to make things work, we have to be very careful and stick to our financial plan, and be good stewards of public funds, because we've got a lot of debt and a lot of expenses hanging out there.
I know that I appreciate things like the recommendations that you gave. I know that you didn't mention them tonight because they're not considered to be material aspects, but I like recommendations for improvement, because we recognize that there's always room for improvement. And you've also noted some upcoming changes as well, so that the finance department can start getting ready for those, some different ways of accounting, some things that it's not changing how we do things, it's just changing how we account for some of them.
Correct.
And I appreciate those as well.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you.
All right, well, with no further questions or comments, thank you very much. Did you want to make a comment, Ms. Bradlin?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. To thank Mr. Stone and his staff for the work that they do, it's good to hear that we have a healthy fund balance, and I would like to remind council that the two big challenges upcoming in FY '26, next fall, we will begin to look at paying off the 30-plus million bond anticipation notes, and then we have some landfill projects that remain to be funded. So those are upcoming challenges for the city of Bristol. I just wanted to remind council of that. And once again, thank you, Mr. Stone, for the work you and your staff do. And I just want to make a recommendation, that council accept the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2024.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you do have any questions, if you get home tonight and you have a question, or tomorrow, my contact information is on page one of the handout.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, we're looking for a motion and second to accept the annual comprehensive financial report.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further council discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes. Okay, moving to item F, we have two people signed up under item F, and the first one I will call up is Joey Muster. And as I said earlier, if, when you come up, please state your name and address. You have three minutes to make your comments, and you'll have a green light, a yellow light, and then a red one, that means your time is up.
Gotcha. Joey Muster, 349 Timber Oak Drive, Bristol, Virginia. After the statement that he just gave, I might see why my taxes went up $100,000. I know you all need the money. It raised, mine went up to 70, mine was raised 75% from last assessment. And I just think that that is, I know how you explained it, and I know you all are going to try to work this out, as far as lowering the tax rate, but there are people out there struggling, and I mean, I've got two handicapped neighbors that live right beside me. I help them every day. And between food city, and food prices, and taxes and taxes that they have, they're struggling every day. That's great. Mr. Eads is not going to try to get his taxes taken down on his property. I'm sure he makes more money than a lot of people do in the city, but this is not a city that is rich in employment as far as take on pay. I know you said that we're all in the same boat, but we're really not. I mean, there's, you know, if you really want to get down to it, as far as certain groups of people, I mean, you know, you could be, you know, you might have had a husband, he died, you've got the house now, and you're paying all the taxes and the payments on it, and he's not bringing in another source of money. I don't know how the guy did the assessments. He, I mean, you can't do a true assessment and raise somebody's taxes $100,000 by walking through my yard. I promise you. And I have not done nothing in the last, as somebody else said, the last five years. I have not done anything to my house, not built on any rooms, nothing. And I do appreciate the information where I can appeal it to the, another group after, who is going on the first appeal? Is this going to be the guy coming down that did my assessment that I appealed to on the first one?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, somebody was talking about fair market value as far as the state law went, I think that was you, and I don't know how you would do that. I mean, do I have to sell my house to prove that it wasn't worth what they assessed it at? Or do I just take offers and say, hey, my best offer was this, and so my property ought to be assessed at that? I'm not really sure. But I guess we're, I have filed an appeal, like a lot of you have, and I just thought that I needed to come in here and be heard tonight, and you need to think about, you know, these people struggling, the trash went up. I know that was a big deal, and it wasn't anywhere close to the price that this is going to cost us. But I don't know who, you know, you all are really out of the final decision on this, from what I understand, other than setting the tax rate. So I can just appeal to you to try to take care of the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, by lowering the tax rate to where it will not, you know, my house is definitely not worth $133,000 or whatever, but that's, you know, if I can get that knocked down, and then you take care of the value, I think that would satisfy me. I don't have a problem with it going up $10,000 or something like that. I haven't touched.
Thank you, Mr. Muster. Your time is up, but I appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to also call up Karen Mieres.
Karen Mieres?
Mieres.
Yeah. You addressed my question on taxes pretty well, except for, one of the things I was questioning was Mr. Eads' comment that it's on the fair market value. Fair market value, is that according to the federal house index increases? Because if, who has assessed the value of my house is from the east coast, or is from the north, little teeny tiny house, the value here will be 10 times more up there, and we're a depressed area. We can't, there shouldn't be a reflection on that, on what we're assessed. I do understand the appeals process, I've been through that before, to, not to very much satisfaction. I live in an area that some houses are very, very small, and some houses are very large. Now, if a large house is sold, and you say it's the market value, and that is what was sold in my area, that doesn't leave much for the little man who lives in a real tiny little house, trying to adjust the difference between the large house that's sold in the area, and the small house that's just two doors down. So, yeah, I have a discrepancy with that, and compared to the federal housing index, I think there's a great difference this area compared to all over the US. But thank you for addressing that.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, proclamation to honor and recognize the Bristol Host Lions Club for their 100-year anniversary. And looking for a staff report from Randy.
Yes, council, tonight you have before you a proclamation recognizing the Bristol Host Lions Club. They have been in service to our community for over 100 years. They actually received their charter only seven years after the first Lions International received their charter. And initially, 24 men signed up to receive the charter for the Bristol Host Lions Club on October 29th of 1924. They have maintained membership throughout both cities throughout this time period, and they participate in many service activities that benefit both Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee, concentrating significantly on the commitment to provide vision-related work, which came from a 1925 address from Helen Keller. They also work with organizations such as Breakthrough T1D, formerly the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation, Family Promise of Bristol, Habitat for Humanity, and others. So we would, they also sponsor picnic shelters here at Bristol, Virginia Sugar Hollow Park, and at the Bristol, Tennessee Steel Creek Park, so we just want to recognize them for their service to the community over the past 100 years.
All right, thank you. So we'll have a reading of the proclamation.
A proclamation recognizing the Bristol Host Lions Club, 100 years of service, whereas 100 years ago, only seven years after the Lions International received their first charter as a service club, 24 men signed up and received the charter for Bristol Host Lions Club on October 29th, 1924. And whereas the organization formed in Bristol, Virginia, as there were adequate meeting spaces found there, and whereas the club has maintained equal membership from both cities since its formation, and whereas the Bristol Club was the seventh one formed in the state of Virginia with the original leadership team of Jerry Rucker, Robert Torbert, Bernard Weekly, Fred Tobler, Paris Mead, Fred Runing, and Walter Keys. And whereas the club participated in service activities benefiting Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee community, concentrating significantly on the national commitment to provide vision-related work, which came from a 1925 address from Helen Keller. And whereas the Bristol Host Lions Club partners with organizations such as Breakthrough T1D, Family Promise of Bristol, Habitat for Humanity, and others, and whereas the Bristol Host Lions Club sponsors picnic shelters at both the Bristol, Virginia Sugar Hollow Park, and Bristol, Tennessee Steel Creek Park, providing recreation opportunities for all community members. There therefore be it resolved that the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee do hereby appreciate and celebrate the 100 years of service from the Bristol Host Lions Club in the Bristol community, adopted this the 10th day of December, 2024.
All right, thank you. Looking for a council motion and second?
I move for approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second.
All right, any council discussion?
Lions Club's done a great service for our community, as well as nationally, and we are very appreciative of everything they do for the community.
I would second that. They do a fantastic job just serving.
They do a fantastic job just serving their neighbors, serving, serving the world. And they partner with other organizations. I know when I was in scouts as a kid, um, we partnered with the Lions Club to do a couple of service projects. So it's just, they do fantastic work in the community.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. So I'd like to say, uh, thank you to the Bristol Host Lions Club. And we have a member here tonight. We have the, um, secretary, member and secretary Greg Androni. And I would like to ask him to come up and accept this, uh, proclamation. So thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, approval of revised employee handbook. And we have, um, Angie here tonight with us.
Hi, members of council. On June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, the city council approved the adoption of the employee handbook for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. Since the June adoption of the handbook, hybrid sick leave, donated leave, bereavement leave, and holiday pay policies have been reviewed and revised to better meet the needs of the city and its employees. The recommendation is for council to approve the revised handbook for adoption on January first, two thousand twenty-five. Here's the summary, here's a summary of those revisions. Um, new and revised policies. Hybrid plan sick leave, sick leave credits for hybrid plan employees will, shall be provided at a rate of ten hours per month. Sick leave credits accumulated cannot exceed nor accrue beyond the maximum limit of a hundred and twenty hours within the fiscal year. Leave donation. Hybrid plan employees won't be allowed to receive donated leave once all other available leave is exhausted for absences that are not eligible for short-term disability benefits through the Virginia retirement system. Examples include when an employee is within the one-year waiting period before short-term disability coverage begins, or if the employee is absent due to the care of an immediate family member. Bereavement. We expanded the policy to include aunts and uncles to the list of immediate family members for bereavement leave eligibility. Clarification, clarification of existing policies. There were some language discrepancies in our holiday policy, so we've changed it to the following. The following employees will not be paid, will not have been paid holidays, part-time employees, temporary employees, employees who are not in a paid status the full workday preceding, and the full workday following a paid holiday. And an employee who is not in a paid status due to the extended sick leave when all other leave credits have been exhausted. Um, our recommendation is for council to approve these changes and approve the revised handbook for January first.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you, um, always staying on top of these things and, uh, recognizing that it was time to do this update. And I think it's important to look at, um, updating that leave in there for sick leave. And, um, so, um, in order for it to be equal and, and, um, fair across the board. So thank you for recognizing that and updating, updating that. Um, looking for a council motion and second?
Uh, I move for approval of the revised employee handbook with the changes recommended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Uh, I do a couple of things, Ms. Blevins. Thank you for explaining that to us. For, for public information, can you explain the difference in a hybrid employee and someone who's not considered a hybrid employee?
Um, a hybrid employee is a, an employee who's hired after two thousand fourteen. Um, we have Plan One and Plan Two, our more senior employees there are in the Virginia retirement system under Plan One and Plan Two. They have an entirely different sick leave policy. They are not eligible for short-term disability. And then hybrid again is hired after two thousand fourteen.
Thank you for that. I know there was some question, you know, when you hear a hybrid, you think, who in the city is at home half the time? So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, I, I will, I'll just say briefly, you know, I, I know a lot of work went into this. I know we've discussed it before this meeting and, and the employee handbook is something that I'm glad we stay on top of it regularly, uh, to keep it as up to date and as comprehensive as possible. And, and you know, we have a lot of employees that, you know, we, we really appreciate the work that they do. And, you know, hopefully we're able to provide them with good benefits, you know, good pay, a good place to work. You know, that's, that's, that's what we want to do is be a good place for them to work. And, and hopefully the rules set forth in this handbook will help go a long way to continue that trajectory for us.
I'd just like to thank you for the work you've done on this. I know, um, this, this handbook was a big task a year ago and getting it all pulled together. But appreciate the work you've done, the improvements you've made this year. And I just, I, I'm very thankful for the, the city employees that we have. They all do a fantastic job. And if there's anything like this where we can kind of fine tune to, to better serve them, better take care of them, I'm, I'm sure we'd love to take a look at that. Just thank you to our, our great employees and thank you for the work you've done.
All right. If no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. Okay, moving into, um, the next item. Um, would be a joint public hearing for ZMA zero-three dash twenty twenty-four Tax Map Partial Three Oh Eight Dash Two Dash One. And I will now open the public hearing and ask Chairman Shu to do the same thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll open the meeting.
Okay. Um, we do have a couple of people, uh, signed up for public comment. So now I will ask Jeff Bryan to come up and, um, to share his comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. Um, the flexible redevelopment, uh, zoning is, um, is pretty nebulous. Uh, it can be interpreted to mean about whatever, uh, someone wants it to mean, especially with all the exceptions that are written in. Um, as adjacent landowners and for the people, uh, the, in, uh, nearby properties, I'd like to know what they're going to do with the land. Uh, it's going to have a direct effect on our property values. Um, we don't know what they're going to do with it. We'd like to know, we'd like to have a little bit of transparency. And, um, I urge that, uh, we not support rezoning this until we have some. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next person up is Ben Dowdy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the esteemed council members for letting me speak tonight. Um, my name's Ben Dowdy. I live at two eight nine Linwood Drive, which is adjacent to the White Site. Uh, my property backs up to it. This land was donated to the city with specific instructions to protect the local homeowners and the area. If we're going to change the zoning, whatever happens should respect this gift. And we should know exactly what is gonna be there. It is impossible to make a decision on rezoning without knowing what the plans are, right? Uh, this document that you gave says that the area was unused. That's not true. Who wrote the document? That area was used for soccer practice, football practice, and other recreational uses. It was great, fantastic. A lot of people use that. Then all of a sudden it comes up with signs, don't come on this property because, uh, it's been sold. Uh, I don't know what happened here, under the table or behind the walls, but something that, that was not discussed. It just happened. Uh, this should be thought about very carefully. Uh, anything that puts there should be in the best interest of the community. There are too many unanswered questions to approve this. Uh, for example, what is the buffer zone? How are you gonna handle runoff? We need engineering. We need to know what's there and what's engineering gonna be before we can approve it. That's crazy. Let's just approve a wide open, as he said, they could do whatever they want with it. Uh, that's not right and that's not fair. Uh, approving this without questioning the details is not in the best interest of anyone, especially your constituents and our community. I know this is an intelligent board, uh, and you will make the correct decision and deny this request. Because we, we don't want this to become a legal issue, right, Randall? Uh, it's just not in anybody's interest for that to happen. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, we'll now move into a staff report from Jay.
Um, Madam Mayor, members of council. Staff has received an application for a zoning map amendment, otherwise known as a rezoning, for property commonly referred to as the White Site, which is at the intersection of Bonham Road and Old Airport Road, Tax Map Parcel Three Zero Eight Hyphen Two Hyphen One. As you see, you know, it is basically just a vacant, mostly level piece of land there at the intersection. The request has come from Katie Moore, who is the member manager of Falls Acquisitions LLC. The request is to rezone the property from M to C, which is General Industrial with conditions, uh, to the FRD, which is the Flexible Redevelopment District. And I'll go into that just a little bit later, exactly what those conditions are. The conditions on the property, though, in general, they do restrict industrial wholesale or, you know, they're restricted to those types of facilities. So there's not very many different things you could do on that property right now, even if it was rezoned. As you see, the property zoning has that M two C designation. Um, it does adjoin residential property on Linwood, in Linwood Hills and on Old Airport Road. Uh, across the street, you have part of the, uh, Bristol, uh, why am I completely blanking on that? Thank you. Right, and then UPS and VDOT over in that area there. Sorry. Oh, so I will just leave this one up and go through the staff report real quick. As I mentioned, the petitioner proposes amending the zoning map to change the parcel from M two C, conditional zoning of, uh, General Industrial to the Flexible Redevelopment District for Tax Map Parcel Three Zero Eight Hyphen Two Hyphen One. The notice was advertised for this public hearing in the Bristol Herald Courier on November twenty-third and November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in accordance with state code. And adjoining property owner notices were sent out on December second, two thousand twenty-four. The property was rezoned to its current designation in nineteen eighty-seven, and that was done to mirror the restrictive deed covenants that are also attached to that property. Um, currently, it's a vacant lot. It is ten point six three acres. And historical use is vacant, yes. Um, however, there have been in the past, they were allowed to use that property for youth recreation facilities. Get to my next section. Um, in this area, there is a mix of residential, public, semi-public, office, and manufacturing uses. The closest residential properties are across the street and adjacent to the site and accessed from Old Airport Road. There's a mobile home parked directly across the street on Old Airport Road and then some other houses and then Linwood Hills on that side. Um, the Flexible Redevelopment District, the purpose of this district per the, per the code is to encourage the creative redevelopment of certain previously developed properties by allowing a mix of compatible land uses in conformity with the city comprehensive plan and with an approved site plan. This may entail the reuse of existing structures or the redevelopment of former commercial or industrial sites for new construction or a combination of both activities. The intent is to ju- rejuvenate economic activity to relatively large tracts that have been vacant, thereby providing jobs and increased tax base. And I've listed in your staff report all the different things that are permitted by right and are permitted by special use permit in the FRD. Uh, these uses, um, these uses, uh, run from residential uses to commercial uses to maybe some light industrial or office uses. So that's kind of the purpose of the, to make it flexible, have kind of a mixed use potential there. As I mentioned, there are conditions currently attached to the zoning and to the land on this property. I'll go through those with you real quick. The following things that I list are what can go on there currently. Um, A, establishments for the manufacturer, processing, assembly, and distribution of products and the office buildings or corporate headquarters related thereto. B, establishments for scientific research and development. C, establishments primarily for the wholesale distribution of goods, products, and materials. D, heliports and public utility facilities for the occupants of the industrial park. E, industrial facilities. And F, public uses necessary to service the property. The reasoning that we have found as to why this, the, this particular piece of property was zoned conditionally was to kind of form a, a bit of a buffer zone between the manufacturing uses that are currently there and the residential neighborhood of Linwood Hills. So deed restrictions, these deed restrictions, these covenants were placed on the property and then it was rezoned to reflect those. So even if the property is rezoned, they will still, the property owner will still have to request removal of the restrictive covenants before anything else can be put on that property. And the process for that is that, um, it would have to be approved by the Industrial Development Authority and a minimum of sixty-six percent of the current owners of properties in the Bristol Industrial Park. To this point, um, staff has not been contacted by the property owner to begin this process. The future land use map, uh, of the comprehensive plan that has just currently been adopted in two thousand twenty-four shows this as light commercial. And I do kind of want to go through our staff comments. So in the impact, local traffic, city engineer Grayson Toller commented that from an engineering traffic perspective, based on current VDOT and city traffic studies, as well as potential upcoming smart scale projects, the city will require a traffic impact analysis with the site plan regardless of the zoning or proposed use. Uh, under natural resources, there should be no adverse impacts on natural resources. City staff will require all environmental-related permitting to be obtained and approved prior to development, including soil and erosion control and stormwater management. And I would like to add, screening will be required between this property and any other residential property if it is developed commercially. Uh, public facilities, the school system. So depending on the proposed use, traffic could impact the Virginia Primary School and Virginia Intermediate School. Parks and Recreation, parks should not be impacted by the request. Emergency services, our fire marshal Eric Blevins commented that hydrants are present and BVU projected flows would be acceptable for this change in zoning. Wait, water, wastewater, and electrical utilities. Um, Will Witcher, who is the Water Resources and GIS Director with BVU, commented that development of this parcel is subject to the conditions of the release and settlement agreement between BVU and the city of Bristol, Virginia. I did attach that in your packet. It begins on page four and ends on page six. Basically, what it says is if the developer wishes to construct a residential development of a hundred and fifty units or fewer, it would outline what the responsibilities of the developer are, the responsibilities of BVU, and the responsibilities of the city. They would not apply if it was a larger residential development or a commercial, uh, facility. Public transit, uh, Bristol, Virginia Transit serves this property with the East Bristol Route and transit. So transit could be impacted depending on the proposed use. However, that route is currently, um, would have the capacity to serve more people. Under government services, we did have a comment from Mac Chapman, our Economic Development Manager. He commented that he would not recommend a rezoning without knowing the intended end use. Bristol, Virginia is limited in land availability and this property is arguably the best available land for industrial in the city. land for industrial in the city. The previous rezoning in this area was approved while working on covenant amendments in order to allow a new use in line with those covenants. Mr. Chapman is, of course, referring to the former Office Max property that was just rezoned by the council within the last couple of months. Rezoning this property at this time would not make a lot of sense because the end use will still need to be in line with the restrictive covenants. It may also be important to note that the applicant has been notified about the restrictive covenants, and he has not yet reached out to me or IDA to discuss any amendments. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jay. I will now close the public hearing and ask Chairman Chu to do the same.
I think it's on. Thank you, Madam Mayor, now close our meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinances, first reading. An ordinance to classify tax map numbers 17-13-4F, 17-15-4-15, 17-15-4-16, 17-15-4-17, 17-15-4-18, and 28-3-2-2A as blighted properties and increase the real estate tax rate by 5% on the same pursuant to Virginia Code 58.1-3221.6.
Could you read that again?
Yeah, I know. Phew. No one has signed up for public comment, and so we're looking for a staff report by Randy. Thank you.
Counsel, as part of the 2025 general reassessment on the value of property for the City of Bristol, Virginia, I ask Wampler Eames appraisal group to conduct an exterior inspection of each one of those parcel numbers that have been listed above, which is also known as the U.S. Magis International Education Center Incorporated, or formerly Virginia Intermont. The city assessor, Wampler Eames, determined that under the Code of Virginia Title 58.1-3221.6, that the buildings are derelict and considered blighted. Due to the fact that these buildings are considered blighted, state law will allow us to increase the real estate tax rate by 5% on each one of those parcels. So tonight is a first reading of an ordinance to allow us to increase the tax rate on each one of those parcels. I would go further on to say that each one of those parcels has a building on it at this point. My initial ask to the assessor was to consider the entire campus blighted, and I understand why he can't, simply because it is hard to say that a vacant lot or a parking lot is blighted property. So he failed, he declined to blight the entire property, but any parcel up there that does have a building on it is now considered blighted by the assessor.
All right, thank you. Now looking for a council motion and second for the first reading of the ordinance full or by caption.
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. Any council discussion?
Yes, so thank you to the city manager for pushing our assessor on this, and thank you to the assessor for, for doing this. The, the VI campus has long been a problem, and it has long been something we have tried to find a good answer to. And I am hopeful that, you know, taking this step, considering all of these buildings blighted, which is something that we all knew, but now we have a legal definition for it, will hopefully, you know, be another, be just another tool in our toolbox to, to incite some action from the owners in some way, shape, or form, so fully in favor of this.
I'll just add, I agree with that. I think that hopefully this will capture the attention of the owners. We've tried on some other things as well, so I think this is a good step forward to do that. With no other discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. Reading of ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 24-16, an ordinance to classify tax map number 17-13-4-F, 17-15-4-15, 17-15-4-16, and 28-3-2-2 as blighted property and increase the real estate tax rate by 5% on the same pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1-3221.6.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes. Next item is item H, adjournment.
I move that we do now adjourn.
Second.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Holmes.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes, and we are adjourned.[1791.86]